Good evening, everyone. This is the Board of Trustees' Regular Meeting 2020-14. It's August 11, 2020. The time is 7:33 PM. We're upstairs in the Village Hall Auditorium. Jane, please take the role.
President Berry?
Here.
Trustee Olenychik?
Here.
Trustee Desmond? Trustee Phelan?
Here.
Trustee Vorder? Trustee Mallow?
Here.
Trustee Stalker?
Here.
We have a quorum.
Thank you. Would everyone rise for the pledge, please?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, equal and equal with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. I'm told we have no public comments tonight. Is that correct, Jane?
Correct.
Okay, thank you. Any conflicts of interest to disclose with any item on tonight's agenda? Okay, hearing none. We have the joyous occasion for number five, oath of office and appointment of police chief. Dan Vittorio, this is requested by our village manager, Randy Palmer, and our outgoing chief of police. And is...
Dan, there he is.
Dan, here you are.
It's a great night in the Village of Oklaun. Very proud of Dan. I, Daniel Vittorio...
I, Daniel Vittorio.
Having been appointed...
Having been appointed.
To the position of police chief...
To the position of police chief.
In the Village of Oklaun, County of Cook...
In the Village of Oklaun, County of Cook.
Do solemnly swear...
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States...
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of Illinois...
And the Constitution of the State of Illinois.
And that I will faithfully discharge...
And that I will faithfully discharge...
The duties of the office of police chief...
The duties of the office of police chief.
To the best of my ability...
To the best of my ability.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Could Deanna come up, please? Do you want to introduce Deanna?
Yes, this is my wife, Deanna, my mom, my dad, my brother-in-law, my sister, their two kids, my daughter Lauren, my son Jake and his girlfriend, they all came out, and my friend Bill Joyce, chief of South Chicago Heights, and all the way out here, all my other friends out there, Ed Joy, we were at the Sheriff's Department together 10 years ago. If I forgot anybody, I'm sorry. It's a little overwhelming.
I can't do a speech, but because of the constrained quarters here, I'll just get it off really quick.
Why don't you go by the microphone by District 1? And then, while Chief Vittorio is walking over there, I want to recognize all the people who came out. If you're at home, you cannot see, but we have quite a big presence from our Oklaun Police Department and people lining the stairway coming up here, but due to COVID restrictions, we can't let everyone in the room. I just really want to thank everyone for showing support for Chief Vittorio.
Like the mayor said, no one gets here without a lot of help, so there's a lot of people I'd like to thank. First and foremost, I'd like to thank Randy Palmer. He's given me two appointments, Division Chief Patrol and to take his place as chief of police, and I truly appreciate it. Thank you for the three years. I think we did a lot together for the department, and best of luck in your whole as village manager. There's a lot of other people I'd like to thank. I'd like to thank my family for coming out. It's been a long journey. Thank you for supporting me. There's a lot of mentors I had along the way, and a lot of them are here. Mike Murray, Chief Mike Murray, he appointed me commander, division chief of administration. John Harrison was my first FTO. We still talk a lot, and I still ask him for advice. When we first started running together, I just kind of kept my mouth shut and nodded my head, but now I'm starting to talk back. I don't think he likes that, but I get to do that now. Dave Weston, he was kind of my mentor on midnights. Thanks, Dan, for everything. There are a lot of other people here. Denny Doyle, I know he was out here somewhere. If it wasn't for him, I wouldn't know how to do a schedule right, but thank you, thank you, all of you. And then, not for my immediate family, my wife and kids, if it wasn't for you, I wouldn't be here, especially for my wife. No offense to the Me Too clause, but I am the perfect example that behind every man is a good woman. When I was out going back to school or going to call-outs or going to class or whatever, she kept everything going at home. For those of you that know my son Jake, that alone should nominate her for sainthood. But, and to my kids, you're the reason I'm here, too. I always wanted to be the dad that you could look up to and be as proud of me as I am of you. So, thank you, everyone.
Would you like to add anything to that?
Wow, what do you add? I want to congratulate Dan. He deserves it. I want to thank, as Dan said, I'd like to thank the board for giving me the opportunity to be the chief, and my family. I want to thank Beth, who I couldn't have done it. I don't think any of the chiefs can do it without Beth. But, good luck, Dan. You're going to need it, especially in this day and age. I wish you nothing but the best, and if you ever need anything, I'll be available to help you out. Congratulations.
Does anyone need to get a photo before we move on? Did you guys get a good photo?
We're going upstairs by the way.
Okay, very good, very good. Dan, you know, I think when Randy was chief, he knew this, but I just want to say it for the record, this board fully supports our police department in every way, and I want you to know on behalf of the Board of Trustees, you know, should you need things, just, you know, let us hear from you.
That's one great thing about being an Oklaun policeman. I know there's a lot of bad news in the press for police, but it's great to have a village board and also a community that supports us. I can honestly say, this last couple of years, the support that we've gotten from the community is overwhelming, and I look to return the favor, and I promise you guys, there may be some growing pains, but no one's going to try harder to make this a safe place to live and raise a family.
We know that, and we're so happy, and congratulations to you and all the best.
Thank you.
Any trustees want to add anything?
Luck.
Okay, very...
Yeah, Mayor.
Trustee Vorder?
Yeah, Dan, you know you're getting old when a patrolman that worked for you is now the chief. Congratulations, it's been a great department, and I'm sure under your command it'll leave me better. Anything you need from this board, let me know, and I'll make sure we get it for you. Thank you.
And on that note, my training officer's son is now a patrolman of the department.
Yeah.
Two-point over is a little bit...
Well...
Thank you.
Very good. Thank you. One more round of applause. Best of luck. And thank you, everyone, for showing your support. I know he's going to be leaning on your support in the days ahead. It is a challenging time right now. Joe? Our treasurer, there's a chair here if you'd like. Okay. Well, the good feelings continue to roll. We have Agenda Item 6, oath of office and appointment of fire chief Zachary Riddle, and this was requested by acting village manager Randy Palmer. Chief Riddle, there he is.
Like I said, it's a great night in Oklaun. Okay. Hi, Zachary Riddle. Having been appointed...
Having been appointed.
To the position of fire chief...
To the position of fire chief.
In the Village of Oklaun, County of Cook...
In the Village of Oklaun, County of Cook.
Do solemnly swear...
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States...
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of Illinois...
And the Constitution of the State of Illinois.
And that I will faithfully discharge...
And that I will faithfully discharge...
The duties of the office of fire chief...
The duties of the office of fire chief.
To the best of my ability...
To the best of my ability.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations, Dan.
And then, do you want to call the people in the hallway who might want to come in here?
Sure. Any members of the fire department could come on in. Right now, my father, retired chief Bill Riddle, is going to be putting on my badge.
Anyone else you want to introduce and say anything? Do you want to go to the station?
Yeah, I'll steal a mic away from someone.
So, that pinning not only fogged all our glasses, but brought tears to our eyes. What a beautiful moment, and just want to say, wow.
Thank you very much. Let's see. Obviously, that wasn't on the firefighter test, working the microphone, so thanks for your indulgence. My mother, Sherry, father, Bill Riddle, my girlfriend, Bit Wilkening, thank you very much for being here. My father is a longtime firefighter, and as coincidence would have it, both of our first days as fire chief was exactly 20 years to the day apart. So, he's been retired for 10 happy years, so the happy guy retired. So, I just want to say, thank you very much, Board of Trustees, Mayor, Manager Palmer, Village Clerk, thank you, not only to my family, but a big thank you to the men and women of the Oklaun Fire Department, without which the mission never gets done. These men and women are the muscle behind the mission, day and night, 365 days a year, no matter what. So, you take a day like yesterday, they ran 68 calls, back-to-back, all day and all night. So, without them, there is no Oklaun Fire Department. So, a tip of the helmet to them, a word about what our future holds as the Oklaun Fire Department. As we look to develop our leaders, we look to our philosophy, which is mission first and people always. Our mission statement is, your life is our mission, and that's the fact. And we do that through training and education. We do that through living our values of loyalty, empathy, duty of respect, selfless service, honor, integrity, personal courage, every single day, through these men and women, and without them, it would be impossible for me to do my job. So, everyone in this room, and the firefighters, the board, thank you very much for this opportunity. It's the opportunity of a lifetime. It's our family business, and I'm glad to be here with you. Thank you very much, Manager Palmer. Thank you for the opportunity, and that's all I have.
Thank you.
Have a great night, everybody.
Would any trustees like to make a comment, or anyone here? Trustee Stalker?
Yeah, Zach, I had recently had the opportunity to use your services, and I appreciate the fact that I'm alive. That's all I've got to say. I really appreciate the fact that you guys did your job well, and I had the opportunity to come back and serve on the board. So, thank you very much to all you guys. You're absolutely important to me. Thank you.
Thanks, bud.
Thank you. Anyone else? And on behalf of our residents, I want to thank all of you and your team for keeping us safe during this pandemic. It is certainly more challenging than it's ever been, and we really appreciate that, and I just wanted to say that, and best of luck as you take the helm.
Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Thank you very much, and very, very nice.
Now, you guys get to...
Let's have one more round of applause. So, we have a lot of things to be proud about in the Village of Oklaun, and our first responders, you know, our police and our fire are just a source of great pride, but also, our Public Works Department is a big source of pride as well, and Steve Barrett recently retired after four, nearly five decades of service, is our Public Works Director, and we wish him the very best. But, we want to introduce our new Public Works Director, Mr. Jeff Sebeck. Is it Sebeck or Seebek?
I'm trying Sebeck.
Sebeck, that's what I thought. So, I'm going to invite you to come to a microphone, any microphone you want to grab, and, you know, we just want to say hello and welcome you and say a few words. Thank you.
Well, good evening. Thank you for the nice welcome. Do I sound okay here? All right. So, I do want to, you know, thank village manager Palmer for giving me the vote of confidence and bringing me aboard. I will say that it's been a pleasure getting to know the team from Public Works. I was able to get a good orientation with them the first few days of my time on site, and also, being down, working in, having the office down here in, you know, down by the...
The bowels of Village Hall.
I wouldn't call it that. Let's call it the ground floor. And getting to work with, you know, some of the folks from, you know, Community Development has been really great. I really appreciate all the assistance and, you know, guidance and patient, you know, responding to my questions, and it's been a huge help these first weeks since I've been coming onboard. So, I will keep it brief, and again, thank you very much. It's been a pleasure and a very exciting time, and I'm looking forward to the future.
That's awesome. Thank you, Jeff. You hit the ground running, and continue to have a major storm event that moved through Oklaun yesterday, and your crews were out, I think you said 150 sites were cleared.
As of this morning, so...
And, you know, that's an incredible effort, and, you know, I know we appreciate that update quite a bit, and I know you're staying on ComEd for the remainder of the homes that need power. It's a big thing when you have so many municipalities affected, but yeah, thank you very much and welcome. Does anyone want to add anything? Yes.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. I want to thank Jeff and Bill Meyer and Chief Palmer. As you described the storm yesterday, I don't know if it settled over my district or mine in Bud's almost exclusively. I know it affected everybody, but it was like a bomb blow-off in our neighborhood. Every other home, it seemed, a tree was down, a major branch, and I, through the night, was sending emails and texts and locations, and within the first two, three hours of this morning, got neighbors telling me, oh my God, it's already taken care of. That's phenomenal. For somebody who's been here, what, a week and a half, two weeks?
Well, I got all to Bill because he really kept things...
Yeah.
Pretty great.
So, that's a great sign for the village that the team is tested at the very earliest hour and came through very well, you know, but for the ComEd issue, which I'm sure Trustee Olenychik has something to say tonight, our go-to on ComEd, it is unacceptable from my perspective. I liken it to the discussion we often have about the storm water backing up in people's homes. It affects everybody pretty much equally. I understand you have to do hospitals and nursing homes, but when it comes to the rest of us, each municipality should get some representation, and I wouldn't say we do it based on population, but to say that, you know, we haven't had hardly any crews through 2, 3, 4 o'clock this afternoon, I think they're still staging...
Right.
Or tend to... A friend of mine who coming from Pennsylvania, he works for ComEd, they called him back, and he was telling me that they're just now getting their orders. I know it was a massive, massive outage. I explained that to the probably 100 people I got emails from and texts, but at some point, when, including myself, when you call ComEd's number as they instruct you to do, and you press 1, and you press 1, and then you this, and then they tell you, okay, here comes reporting and ready to talk, and then you get hung up on over and over again, that's worse than a busy signal, that's worse than no response at all. So, they have to address the responsiveness in addition to the, again, lack of what appears to be a devoted effort to Oklaun. And I know, Mayor, you, I saw some communications from you along those lines. I think we need to maintain that. Nobody's been better, from the village's perspective, than Trustee Olenychik. From ComEd's perspective, probably not so much, but Alex, I think we need to call you to action again. That's all I wanted to say.
Trustee Stalker wanted to make a comment.
Yeah, I just wanted to chime in on the fact that, when I saw the Public Works people out there last night, I couldn't believe how effective they were at clearing the streets and getting things done. They were responsive, responsible, safe, hardworking, they did the job they were supposed to do. Smitty's Tree Service also did it. They did a great job, and they're a good subcontractor. I worked for Conwell Edison for 30 years. This is not the Conwell Edison I work for. They're under indictment right now, they're not responsive. I'm ashamed to say that. There are not people out there on the street right now, and we had the opportunity in the past to have people up here when our crews got tired and had to go home and sleep, which they have to do. Everybody has to rest. It's not safe to work more than 16, 18 hours a day, but they're ill-prepared, they're not responding, and I am ashamed to say, that is not the same company as I work for. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other trustees?
I'd like to...
Chief? I mean Randy, excuse me. Sorry.
Yeah, I think people, it's going to take everybody a while to get used to not calling me chief, but that's fine, as long as you don't put something in front of that.
[laughing]
Yeah, I'd just like to give a little background here. Mayor, when we lost, as you said, one of our career employees here, and Steve, it was a pretty big loss. We also lost Gerald Chicorillo, who was in charge of our street department. So, we began with COVID, we began this restructuring of the village. We need to lean it even leaner than we are right now, which in some cases is hard to do when you're trying to find good people to fill those holes. We were lucky getting Jeff Sebeck. I could say that, you know, when that initial loss happened and we were able to locate Jeff, you know, we were able to get him. He's an engineer, so we were able to combine our former engineering spot with our Public Works Director spot to there, save more money for the village due to, you know, the COVID crisis and now restructuring. So, I want to thank Jeff for coming onboard, and we've hit him with a lot right at the beginning, but he's hit the ground running, and I also want to thank Billy for the job, Billy Meyer.
Incredible.
He's now in charge of streets and sewers, so he's got a two-man job down to one man. So, this is all part of the restructuring that we're undertaking now. So, in some cases, it's painful, but our luck or good fortune is that we find good people that can fill those spots, as well as our existing staff that have stepped up enormously and filled that gap. I do want to congratulate Steve Barrett for his 46 years. I want to congratulate Gerald Chicorillo for his over 40 years as well. So, I appreciate both of their work ethic and what they gave to the village. So, congratulations to them on their retirement, and I hope it's long and healthy. So, thanks again, Jeff.
Anyone else want to comment? Yeah, so it's really, you know, our frontline, we have a new team in place, and they are proven leaders, each of them, and we're just thrilled. So, thank you very much, gentlemen, for giving your talents to our, making them available for our residents. We appreciate that. I'm going to just record here, Item 6, Proclamation for Payroll Week. This is the week of Labor Day, National Payroll Week, and we read this proclamation every year, but in the interest of time, I'm going to sign it right here and then pass that to our clerk to record in the record for today. Thank you very much. Item 9 is a request for approval of the Johnson Phelps VFW to put up a tent in their parking lot at 9514 South 52nd Avenue, hosting a fundraiser for the Blue Reckoning Motorcycle Police Club for the annual St. Jude Children's Hospital fundraiser and anniversary party on August 28, 2020, from 6:00 PM to 11:00 PM. This was requested by the village manager. May I have a motion on number 9, please?
Motion to approve, Mayor.
Thank you. That was Trustee Vorder who made that motion, seconded by Trustee Stalker. Any discussion? Let's call that vote, please.
All in favor?
Aye.
Close? Motion passes.
Thank you. 10 is approval of the meeting minutes for the closed meeting minutes, 2020-05, dated June 9, 2020. May I have a motion on 10, please?
Motion approved.
Thank you. Trustee Stalker made that motion, seconded by...
I'll second, Mayor.
Trustee Vorder, thank you. Any discussion? Let's call that vote, please.
Trustee Olenychik?
Yes.
Trustee Phelan?
Yes.
Trustee Vorder?
Yep.
Trustee Mallow?
Yes.
Trustee Stalker?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you. 11 is approval of the meeting minutes for the special meeting minutes, 2020-12, dated July 14, 2020. May I have a motion on 11, please?
Motion approved.
Thank you, Trustee Stalker. Do I have a second?
I'll second, Mayor.
Thank you, Trustee Vorder. Any discussion here? Let's call that vote.
Trustee Olenychik?
Yes.
Trustee Phelan?
I abstain.
Trustee Vorder?
Yes.
Trustee Mallow?
Yes.
Trustee Stalker?
Yes.
Motion passes 401.
Thank you. 12 is approval of the meeting minutes for the regular meeting minutes, 2020-13, dated July 14, 2020. May I have a motion, please, on item 12?
Motion approved.
I'm going to give that to Trustee Olenychik, and...
Yeah, but it was...
Oh, it was Trustee Mallow? I'm sorry.
It was what?
Trustee Mallow, seconded by Trustee Stalker.
Sorry, bud.
Any discussion?
I tried.
Was it you?
What?
Yeah, it was, there was one...
It doesn't matter. Doesn't matter.
It wasn't Alex, so, yeah. Too much time on this. Let's call the vote.
Trustee Olenychik?
Yes.
Trustee Phelan?
I abstain.
Trustee Vorder?
Yes.
Trustee Mallow?
Yes.
Trustee Stalker?
Yes.
Motion passes 401.
13 is new business by village trustees. We're going to start in District 2, Trustee Olenychik.
Well, I too would like to thank all the people that have retired, and I know that I already talked about Steve Barrett and the great job that he did in Chick, and Randy, you're one of the new ones that have retired from police chief, but now are village managers, so I can tell you that there's not too many people who can handle as many things as you've handled in the last six to eight months and still come out doing a great job like you have been with a great disposition. So, I personally appreciate all that you have done, and congratulations on your new position of being just a full-time village manager, and I know you'll do well.
Thank you.
That being said, your pick, Daniel Vittorio, and recommendation, great guy from the neighborhood, and I just know in dealing with him in the time I've been a trustee, I know he'll continue on the tradition of being a great chief that was handed to you, that was handed to Chief Murray, that was handed to Chief Smitty, and before Chiefs, oh, I'm sorry, I'm leaving out, Bill Villanova and Chief Smitty, but what always amazes me is your guys' chain of command and the ability that any time there's a promotion or somebody that can step up, you guys have done a great job of building your bench and bringing people and giving them the opportunities to really advance. So, the police department has been phenomenal in handling all those things. I will tell you that with Public Works and the retirement of some key people in Public Works, again, the people who work at Public Works, day in, day out, and who are filling higher positions and being promoted in, and I think, you know, Bill is another fine example of somebody that's worked his career in Public Works, but started out at the bottom and worked his way up, and just does a wonderful job for all of the residents in the Village of Oklaun. And, you know, I know, Jeff, you coming in with the experience that you have, and us being in the major water project and the experience that you bring to the table makes me sleep a little bit better because we still have a lot of work to do on that water project, and I know... because we still have a lot of work to do on that water project, and I know that you're gonna bring a lot to the table, uh that, and you've already brought a lot to the table. So looking forward to working with you. And uh Fire Chief Zach, uh again, another uh great promotion. With building all this bench and structure, I was wondering if we could possibly coach and mentor uh the people at Commonwealth Edison, because what what I what I've seen in the last twenty-four hours is no sense of urgency, no sense of plan. Uh and it's not like these storms weren't being predicted two, three days ago that it was gonna be bad and that it was going to hit specific areas. And I understand they get resources and all the logistics that go behind it. But the bigger thing that I've learned from ComEd, and this is what one of their uh one of their engineers said back when we were having serious issues like this, that their motto is fix on failure. It'll never, ever go out of my head. And he actually said, I cannot tell you that this circuit is gonna be any better if I put a new circuit in there. And we were talking about aging infrastructure. Um luckily, um they did some heavy major work, and it's bad when any part of Oaklawn gets uh hit as hard as some of the areas have, and there's some pockets that are still down uh in in Second District. But it really, really bothers me that the first reports this morning, I know we had our village staff out looking to see, was there any ComEd crews on the ground? Not one. Not one. And my last report coming into this meeting, not one. We've got residents, I got a eighty-year-old lady who lives on Sproat that is without power, losing everything she's got in her refrigerator, and we're doing everything we can to help her. And Commonwealth Edison is not doing what they should do, getting people out. And I get it. I understand that they have a lot of power that's out, but it's not a surprise. And what I would think that we should learn, like we've learned from the previous times when this happened, what are they going to do to finally address an aging infrastructure? Address the equipment that needs to be addressed? I will guarantee you, if you do the root cause of this, yes, it's an act of God, what happened. But why is it that some areas with newer infrastructure were able to withstand the storm while other areas with not newer infrastructure were not able to handle? That's a big question that we need Commonwealth Edison to be transparent with and tell us what they're finding out there. Uh it's bad to to know the experience that I've had, we're taking their information. We had to figure out as a village what they needed to do, and they addressed it. But it shouldn't have taken a battle of almost five years to get some of that stuff done. And quite frankly, uh trustee Stalker, uh I appreciate your your honest opinion of a company you used to work for, but Commonwealth Edison needs to be held accountable. I believe that every resident that's been without power for twenty-four to forty-eight hours should be reimbursed for every every part of food that they lost, anything that they was damaged because of this. They're talking. This happened on Monday night. They're talking that some people aren't gonna see power until Saturday. Now, I'm gonna tell you, that's unacceptable. Unacceptable in any means, shape, or form. And we, as a village, want to uh take the lead on this again, because I guarantee you, as we continue to take the lead, these things stop happening, not that weather's gonna stop happening, but the amount of power outages and the length of the power outages. I I'm beside myself hearing a resident saying that finally, after they spent four hours trying to get through to Commonwealth Edison, they were told maybe Saturday. And I hope and I pray God that that's just an overestimate, that they come in sometime Wednesday. But we need to look hard at the facts that are in front of us. And trustees, I know that you've been out in your district and you've taken a look at some of the issues that have been out there, and some of them make sense. Yeah, I can understand a tree falling on a pole, or a pole maybe breaking or a wire coming down. Some of them don't make sense. And we need to get into the root cause of this, and that's what we need Commonwealth Edison to have a representative here at our village explaining to us what they're going to do. Because as of twenty-four hours from when this happened, what have we heard from ComEd? Exactly. Nothing. Unacceptable. So Mayor, I would love to go back into a committee with you to have meetings with Commonwealth Edison. I think we should branch them out back into the neighborhoods that are consistently having issues. One one resident shared with me that she was a little bit concerned that three weeks ago, when there was no storm, she had a slight uh a slight outage. And as I started asking more people, and even asked my wife, you know, have we had any, you know, any power outages? And and my wife explained to me that there were a couple where they were just a minute or two. That could mean other problems are coming. And when weather comes and heat comes, that's gonna strain your already uh aged backbone. But we need to pay attention. It's, we owe it to the residents, and I will tell you, legal counsel, last time we took them and right before we brought them into the ICC, they uh are, that was the first time in their history that they actually paid residents for when we, our surge that they- We need to take a no-nonsense and back our citizens, make sure they're made whole. And I know that staff is doing everything they can. Um on a positive note, I gotta tell you, the Public Works, everybody has lauded the great job that you guys have done, and you have. You were out there making sure that things are getting cleaned up, and and I know that uh Steve Steve Barrett is probably smiling right now going, well, I didn't have to deal with this one. But knowing that he handed the baton off to good people that really care about taking their care of their residents. Um to the village crews, these are guys that are from the neighborhood that take great pride in what they do every day, and I appreciate all the things that they do. And I know that a lot of times, things go on that we don't get to see, like when it's twenty degrees below zero and they're out there fixing a water pipe, or when it's uh when it's a storm damage and they're out there giving up time with their family. But thank you, and and thanks all to all the village staff. I know the police, the fire uh in the Public Works have done a great job in handling. But I will tell you this, we're not done with ComEd. And if any residents uh have any questions or issues, please email me or call me. Uh we do keep a detailed running tab, and I know trustee Phelan's keeping one. I know that trustee Stalker's keeping one. But uh this is not gonna go without some type of meeting and some type of being held accountable.
Yeah, trustee Olenichik, you know, you're you're spot on in, you know, it it isn't just food being spoiled in the fridge, it's people who depend on electronic devices to live. It's it's, you know, it's it's a threat to health and safety and so much. And, you know, when I get a report that wires are hanging down in the street a full day later, it's insane. It's insane. It's it's horrifying. So, yeah, we're not a third-world country, but we get third-world service, and it's really disappointing. So-
Uh just knowing from what we know from the last time, when they came out, they had a spotter came out, said they needed forestry, they had wires coming in within twenty-four hours, they redid a complete whole block and cut down trees. We're not even getting that now.
Yeah.
Unacceptable.
Yeah. Our, we just got a report from our our police crews that there were no trucks visible. Public Works does not see them either. So really horrifying.
As of just now, I got my update uh from our clerk, three thousand three hundred residents of the village of Oaklawn are still without power with no uh ETA that's that's any more than two, three days out. Not gonna happen anymore.
Alex, let me make a comment on it. You know, in the past, when there were outages at Commonwealth Edison, when a major storm was coming through like this, it was assumed that the crews would work longer than they were expected to. So immediately, calls would go out to the utility. They'd call as far as Florida to get whoever was available to come up and work in this area. And they'd be here in time for the crews to get off, go sleep, they'd be working overnight. It looks to me like nobody was called. Absolutely nobody. And that's totally unacceptable. I don't understand it. That's all I gotta say.
Thank you. Let's go on to District Three, trustee Mallow.
Thanks, Mayor. Um I'd just like to add my congratulations to Chief Vittorio, Chief Riddle, uh our new Public Works Director, Jeff. Um welcome aboard, Jeff. Um just just dealing with this, what happened last night and and through this morning and and getting the response from Bill every single minute. I mean, Bill's on it and and letting me know that the trees are gonna be taken care of, what whatever, whatever we need from from my residents, when I hear that that they're getting response, that's all they're looking for, some type of response. As trustee Phelan said, when you call ComEd and you get no answer, that's the worst part. Just give me, like you said, give me a busy busy signal that you didn't answer, but making you go through all this and and not even answering is is unacceptable, as Bud and Alex have spoken to. So um other than that, I just, the only other thing I have is our our summer concerts are still going on. Luckily enough, we uh didn't have one last night. Um we we did have one on Sunday. Uh we're threatened with a little bit of weather, um but uh it didn't come in till overnight. So uh we did have a good show put on by Sushi Roll. Thanks, Alex, for for uh requesting Sushi Roll. So worked out well. Um but we do have some summer concerts ahead. Uh Public Works has done some work on the uh gazebo, and it looked great, amazing. Um we have uh concerts through September and October. Um we moved some of the uh the bands that were to play in the Fallen Green this year, and they were ecstatic to um get a get an opportunity to play on a Sunday night. So uh we do have them coming in. Uh I've been told that Bill will update the uh the signs throughout the village, just kind of let everybody know. But I did want to let everybody know that you can find that schedule on the website and just uh watch out for that schedule for the uh upcoming concerts. So that's all I have.
Thank you. Trustee Mallow, you're really um under your leadership, turning this community into a community that enjoys live music. I want to thank you for, in the Arts and Events Committee, for getting the music at the farmer's market also. Um it's uh usually starts at ten and goes till one, and uh I don't know if it's every week, um off the top of my head, but, you know, it really adds a nice vibe and and, you know, it's a nice thing to do if you happen to have time on a Wednesday morning. Um you see families bringing little kids there, enjoying the music. It's it's really, and uh I know the vendors appreciate the extra energy, so I want to thank you for that.
Absolutely.
And uh we're gonna move on to District Four.
Thank you, Mayor. Uh just to echo on some of the comments already made, and but not to beat up on the story. First off, Paul, I attended many of those on the uh concerts, and it's well-attended by many, many people. I was there on Sunday night, and that band was phenomenal. I understand they're a number-one cover band for many professional performances here in the Midwest, and they certainly did display that level of talent. As to the storm and all the promotions that happened here, as a longtime resident of the village of Oaklawn, I always thought this village, its values came from its employees and the service that the employees provide from the police department, which I had a firsthand experience with as a patrolman, sorry, gentle thing, to the fire department, the street department, always has been phenomenal. Um and then to hear the stories of the incompetence of Comm- Commonwealth Edison and us having to live with those consequences, really not acceptable, and I think we should stay on them, as we have, Alex, and you have, since uh I've been a trustee, since you've been a trustee. Uh I, maybe it's improved. I suppose uh when a storm comes through the town as violent as last night, you're gonna have outages, and that's to be expected. But not to have any kind of response in twenty-four hours. And I imagine entire Cook County probably has had a lot of damage, but we should be getting some reports on on what's going on and where those trucks are and what we can have it. So let's let's work as a team, okay, to put those pressures on uh Commonwealth Edison to hopefully provide a better level of service.
Yeah, and and I know that village staff has already uh requested that they want a countdown of where we're at and how we're gonna get there, so at least we can get out in front of the residents and let them know if Commonwealth Edison's not doing it. But Terry, this is, this is the worst I've ever seen it in communication.
Definitely. Me too. Me too. I can remember back when on a midnight shift, I'd sit on a power line that would come down in the middle of the night, and even in storms, they'd be out there, their responsive time was pretty good. The infrastructure could be argued, maybe the line shouldn't have come down, but their response time, uh I don't know what's going on in the reorganization there, but we're not getting the service. I'm getting electric bills, but I ain't getting the service. Uh that's all I have, Mayor. Okay, thank you.
Thank you. District Five.
Just to chime in on that, Commonwealth Edison serves the Northern Fifth of Illinois. They have more crews than that storm could handle. They didn't even bring their own crews up from other areas, much less go out and solicit crews from other municipalities and other companies. They're a part of Exelon that has hundreds of crews, thousands of workers that have could have been dispatched to this area. This storm was a big one, but it wasn't so big that it couldn't be serviced by the people that are available to serve it. And I'm embarrassed to say I used to work at Commonwealth Edison. All right, I'll get off that. I want to thank um Randy Palmer, who did a great job as village manager, Zach Riddle, Fire Chief, and Dan Vittorio. All of them are great people. I look forward to working with them. They're fine selections. Congratulations.
Thank you. District Six.
Uh thank you, Mayor. So I'll I'll just keep it brief on the ComEd, but I think it's warranted to point out that this is a company that just recently agreed to pay a two-hundred-million-dollar fine uh for bribery. And when you think about the context of what that's about, you know, you can think about a a once proud utility that was responsive, which now may have turned into a bureaucracy of patronage hires and people that are not answering phones or jumping in trucks like they used to. Uh it should be no surprise to us, but as Terry pointed out, the fact that we keep getting these bills and we keep having to pay them, um I'm outraged beyond belief. Uh as Alex said, the people that are calling about, you know, do I start throwing my food away? You know, my mother-in-law, who stays with us, does she need to move somewhere else? I mean, these are real problems affecting people. And uh this company seems to be competing for the worst company reputation uh for the year two thousand twenty, which is a huge, huge task. Uh this this year can't be any more bizarre, any more negative. I mean, it's one thing after another. Um and and in this light, you would think everybody'd be doing their damnedest to do their best. And this is a company that just seems to go in the opposite direction. So again, I would like to chime in, full full force, the entire board, uh and demanding action. At least, as I asked, I think, today, where are these trucks if they're not here? Tell us they're somewhere else working. And we couldn't even get that. We couldn't even get that, you know, they will be there next, they're two away. Uh it just seemed an absolute cluster F, forgive my language, of of nonresponsiveness and unknowing. And I think, as we all said and put a fine line on it, it has to end. And and accountability has to come. This is a utility at the end of the day. And uh, you know, Bud, like you said, back in the day, you know, a proud company. I know many people from my neighborhood growing up worked there. There was a outpost right down the street from me, but those days are gone. Uh I would like to pivot to more positive note. Uh it's been talked about here, the team that's in place. If they'd have known eight months ago what they know now about what we were looking at uh in in the first eight months of this year, I mean, there there are so many bad things that happened, and you've forgotten what they are because the next worst thing. Um but through it all, I think we've done a great job as a village. And uh some of the unsung heroes here are sitting in this room. They need to be talked about Randy Palmer, Brian Hannigan, Adam Metz, Dan Alasinski. Um the, you know, the administration behind the muscle and the Public Works, whose charge it is to take the tax dollars and stretch them as far as they'll go. And in this environment, Brian just sent us the retail tax uh report uh through April, May, or May, Bri, right?
Right.
Uh it's bad, like we thought it would be, but, you know, I think thankfully, we have a diverse business uh group in Oaklawn. Um could have been worse, but uh the the cost-cutting that Randy, you, you and Brian and Adam and and Dan led, and Tom Suwaw picking up the slack on areas. And I mean, that's what I want as a resident. I want two things. I remember when I first wa- ran for office, I didn't even know who my opponent was, and it turned out I was playing in his golf league. I think most people don't care, truthfully, about politics or maybe government. They do care now, given what's going on in government today. But for the most part, on the local level, they want safety and they want cleanliness. They want their garbage picked up, their streets plowed, they want to live in a nice, safe community for their their families. And and that's one area that I think this village has done a phenomenal job, you know, and not saying compared to others, but just at least from my perspective. And oftentimes, it's not, you know, recognized. And we we sometimes we do these newsletters and educate people that their tax dollar, when they see their taxes and they think, oh, my God, all the money we pay the village, and and we only get ten or twelve, twelve percent of the tax bill, correct, by property taxes?
Right.
Um most of it goes to other taxing bodies, school districts, Cook County. Uh but the money that we do get, I I do want to commend you guys for making that go as far as it does, because um again, all I care about, truthfully, where I live, is that I'm not being gouged as a taxpayer, that I'm safe. And as you heard tonight from all of us here, nobody, I, somebody actually texted me the other day, are are you guys considering defunding the police? As if to say that, and and again, not to say it's not a real thing, because we're reading about it over the course of the country, but it's it's confounding that anybody would think this way in light of what's going on. And, you know, again, I just can't say enough about our our collective team and thanking you guys for step stepping up, staying engaged, Jeff coming aboard, leaving a really nice job. I'm sure, in the private sector. I think we have a good team in place. You know, I'm happy to say that, in, in, in just the right amount of time that you guys came in, before things get worse and hopefully they turn around for the better. That's it for this evening.
Okay, very good. Village Manager's Report. Randy.
Mayor, Ford, thank you very much. I'll try to keep this brief. There's three items I definitely want to talk about. First off, as, as the board and the mayor has mentioned, I want to thank our first responders, our 911 dispatchers. Thanks, Diana. Make sure you, we thank them as well. A lot of times they're left out. I want to thank Public Works for all the fantastic work they did. I was getting emails all night, but I know that the team was out there. I know that was being led by Jeff and Billy and they were really, you know, I was pleasantly surprised after reducing the staffing over there to see that they could still handle it and they carried on without missing a beat. So thanks to all those folks as well. I want to thank the staff here. I know today, everybody was taking calls. I want to thank Jane Quinlan, our clerk. She was dealing with a lot of residents that were calling and she was trying to handle that as well, along with her other duties. But most of all, I want to thank the residents as well. As I understand it, a lot of residents that didn't get damaged were out there helping their neighbors that did. I seen it on the news in Chicago, but I also seen it here when I was out riding around this morning, surveying some of the damage, trying to make sure that we had crews in spots they needed to be, but, and as well as the trustees, that they were taking calls from, from their constituents who were letting them know where the problem areas were and we were trying to get crews out there as quick as we can. So I want, I want to thank all those folks who, who were involved in that. Number two, on a, on a negative note, we've begun, we've got to the end of our water meter replacement program. So the village has replaced approximately 98% of the over 30-year-old mechanical water meters with modern electronic meters that themselves will need to be replaced in approximately 20 years. The village's meter replacement program has been completed with an aggressive series of communications to village residents that started in June of 2019 with the farmer's market. The village has made over 10 attempts in various forms, either through mail, telephone, walk-ups, phone calls from the trustees, trying to get any constituents that were left in their area that might not have been notified to contact each resident directly in order to arrange an appointment to allow the village's licensed union plumbers or Water Division employees access to change the meter in accordance with the village ordinance. The village has made accommodations for those homeowners concerned about the ongoing coronavirus pandemic, as well as those with obstructed meters, bad piping or valves, or other extenuating circumstances, including certain vacant homes. Those residents will simply be required to stay in contact with the village's Water Division regarding their plan to clear the obstruction and/or remediate any bad pipes or valves from the service line into the home. As of today's date, the village is down to 180 water accounts or 1% that have not scheduled an appointment or otherwise been contacted by the village. So at that point, we need to begin water shut-offs because we do not know the situation in that residence, that, because there's been either no communication or no attempt by that resident or owner to reach out to the village so we can complete that process. So I want to beg and, and in the strongest way I can, to the residents, to let them know that if you are one of those 180 water accounts, we, we, we really want you to reach out to the village. If you can't let us in for coronavirus reasons or you're afraid to let us in for some other reason, just let us know and we'll try to work through that process with you. We don't want to shut your water off. We were due to shut some off today, but we made the emergency determination in the middle of the storm not to do that. We're probably going to go for a few more days with not doing that, but then we will begin shutting the water off after this and if we do not hear from these residents. So I, I really strongly urge those residents to reach out to the village. The third thing I want to talk about, and I want to make sure that the mayor's not going to talk about, are you going to discuss the CARES Act?
Yes.
Okay, I'm good.
Okay.
That concludes my report.
Okay. Very good. Item 15 is the Consent Agenda and all items on the Consent Agenda are routine and have been brought forward at the direction of the Board of Trustees and will be enacted with one motion. If discussion is desired, that item will be removed and, from the Consent Agenda and considered separately. So A, request to approve the Oklaun Community High School Homecoming Parade on September 30th, 2020, beginning at 6:30 PM from a live church at 89th and Austin. This is the former Oklaun Wesleyan Church. And continue the route south on Austin Avenue to the high school, high school football stadium. B is a request for the Board of Trustees' approval and direction to the Board of Fire and Police Commissioners to hire one firefighter/paramedic from the current eligibility list to a resignation. C, request to approve the Zoning and Planning Commission referral for a second driveway variation in order to construct a new garage at 9627 South 50th Court. This was a six-zero vote to approve. Petition number 202011. Brian Nichols was the petitioner in District Three. D is Ordinance 201435, an ordinance approving a driveway variation for a single-family residence at 9627 South 50th Court. E is a request to approve the Zoning and Planning Commission referral recommending an amendment to the Village zoning ordinance sections 2-1-7-1, public hearings, and 2-1-8, fee schedule, and 4-14-2, procedure for applications for special use, changing the notification requirement for public hearings on special use applications, and fee schedule for public hearings. This was a six-zero vote to approve. Petition number 2020-12, Village of Oklaun was the petitioner. Then we have item F, an ordinance granting that request. We have G, Ordinance 201437, an ordinance amending certain sections of Title IX, Chapter 4, Article B, entitled Rates and Charges of the Oklaun Village Code. Item H, Ordinance 201438, an ordinance authorizing the placement and use of temporary trailers at 4031 West 95th Street. We have I, Resolution 201447, resolution approving a new agreement between the Village of Oklaun and William Randy Palmer. J, Resolution 201448, a resolution authorizing the execution of an intergovernmental agreement for access to the GIS data between the Village of Oklaun and the Cook County Assessors Office. K is Resolution 201449, resolution authorizing an amendment to the 11000 Laverne PPM. L is request, excuse me, L is Resolution 201450, resolution accepting the proposal of Paycom pertaining to the upgrade of the village's payroll system. We have motion on 15, the Consent Agenda.
Motion approved.
Thank you. Trustee Mallow made that motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you. Trustee Olenichuk is our second. Any discussion, gentlemen? Hearing none, let's call that vote, please.
Trustee Olenichuk?
Yes.
Trustee Phelan?
Yes.
Trustee Vorder?
Yes.
Trustee Mallow?
Yes.
Trustee Stalker?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you. Resolution, 16 is Resolution 201451, a resolution authorizing the execution of a small cell master attachment agreement with Verizon. May I have a motion on 16, please?
Motion approved.
Thank you. Trustee Olenichuk made that motion. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Thank you. Trustee Phelan, any discussion?
Yes, Mayor.
Trustee Phelan?
Chief, or Randy, I don't know if Brian just walked out. I was going to ask a question about this particular agreement, how it relates to number 17. Should we wait for him to come back and tie them together? This is the master agreement.
RFP.
Well, this is a master agreement with Verizon and I just, oh, Tom, you might be able to address it. Bri, on item 16 about the master agreement with Verizon, the only question I have is possible impact with number 17. Can you see any?
No, no, it's, it's going to be incorporated in and that was the one that they weren't sure they wanted to offer.
Okay.
So we.
Make sure your mic's on.
It's going to be incorporated as part of the RFP.
Got it.
Okay.
Okay, with that, move to approve.
Okay. So we have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Let's call the vote on 16, please.
Trustee Olenichuk?
Yes.
Trustee Phelan?
Yes.
Trustee Vorder?
Yes.
Trustee Mallow?
Yes.
Trustee Stalker?
Yes.
Motion passes.
This brings us to 17, which is Resolution 201452, a resolution authorizing the village manager to issue an RFP pertaining to the village's cell tower enterprise. May I have a motion on 17, please?
Motion approved.
Trustee, Phelan made that motion, seconded by Trustee Olenichuk. Any discussion?
Yes, Mayor.
Trustee Phelan.
Just a brief discussion. We talked about this in our Finance Committee. This has been a seven, eight-month project that the Finance Department, the village management, are working on. And essentially what we're looking to do is determine the value of our cell tower enterprise. Tom Swaw's got a lot of experience in this area as well as a communications person. Several, probably more than a year ago, former manager Larry Deech and I were talking about this after I was, I saw an article about pretty good multiples being paid on cash flow for the cell tower enterprises. And we have, I think, 10 or 12, Brian, cell towers throughout the village. So a lot of it comes down to how good our contracts are with the carriers. And as Tom Swaw pointed out, you know, through the work of our, our managers, plural, and our Finance Department over the years, we have very good leases, therefore increases the value of our enterprise. So after compiling all the information, we did get a, an offer of, a nice offer for several million dollars for our enterprise. This is not a motion or move to sell, just to be clear. This, all this is, is looking to put it out there to potential bidders on two fronts. A, an outright purchase, and for the record, we're all aware of assets being sold by municipalities like City of Chicago selling their Skyway and the parking meters and no one's advocating for that, although if the number's good, you know, we can't deny considering it. But the other alternative, and I think that, you know, we, the Finance Department, Finance Committee, like, is a partnership where we would take a minority stake, a company that's a professional in this area, knows far better than we do about how to maximize value, would take a majority stake. And that's what this RFP is, is asking for two, two, two things, really. A, are you interested in bidding on the enterprise? If so, how much will you pay? B, are you willing to partner with us? And if so, what partnership stake would that be? So all this is, is a request to put that out there from the managers, to be clear.
Well, and I, just to add real quick, Trustee Phelan and former manager Deech, and the value of this enterprise, which Tom alluded to, a several-million-dollar offer, I think the foresight of having those towers put on our property are why this, there is any value to the village, as opposed to private property, which is where they originally wanted to come in. And so, again, manager Deech is no longer here and Trustee Phelan has pushed the Finance Department with, with what he did with the former village manager to determine, as he just said, how much value we can get out of this. And I think that's what the RFP will do. I think the Finance Committee, Trustees Mallow, Desmond, and Phelan have come up with the idea to have it in the form of more of a partnership so we don't run into the same issue. I think Tom Swaw's brought up that we need an easement for, to access some of our equipment. So I think we just have to see how this comes back. The only thing I was going to ask, Tom, at some point we have to talk about the date that we want them to respond back to us by.
Yeah.
Which I would, I would think would be sometime in September.
Sooner the better.
Yeah. 30 days out, so.
Yeah. I know there aren't that many, right? I think there's only a couple of major players.
Two, two more is what Kevin, Kevin Carney in your office, Pat, gave us.
Now, the village attorney has identified the biggest players in this area and I think at least three, if not four solicitations or at least requests for proposals is enough in my mind to at least validate the, the value.
And if there's a transaction, it would be in October closing, which we would come back to the board with.
Yeah.
And if that's an asset we could have working for taxpayers, it's something they don't have to pay out of pocket in terms of property taxes, so. Okay, any further discussion on item 17? Let's call that vote, please.
Trustee Olenichuk?
Yes.
Trustee Phelan?
Yes.
Trustee Vorder?
Yes.
Trustee Mallow?
Yes.
Trustee Stalker?
Yes.
Thank you. 18 is Village Clerk's Report. Jane.
A, Approval of Semi-Monthly Disbursements, number 2020-14D, dated July 28, 2020, in the amount of $2,378,552.79.
Thank you. May I have a motion on 18A, please?
Motion to pay the bills.
Thank you. Trustee Vorder made that motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
Trustee Stalker is our second. Any discussion? Let's call that vote, please.
Trustee Olenichuk?
Yes.
Trustee Phelan?
Yes.
Trustee Vorder?
Yes.
Trustee Mallow?
Yes.
Trustee Stalker?
Yes.
Motion passes. And B, Approval of Semi-Monthly Disbursements, number 2020-50, dated August 11, 2020, in the amount of $15,196,539.57.
Thank you. May I have a motion on 18B, please?
Motion approved.
Thank you. Trustee Olenichuk made that motion, seconded by?
Second.
Trustee Stalker, thank you. Any discussion? Call the vote, please.
Trustee Olenichuk?
Yes.
Trustee Phelan?
Yes.
Trustee Vorder?
Yes.
Trustee Mallow?
Yes.
Trustee Stalker?
Yes.
Motion passes. Passes. One more. For the November 3rd general election, the Village of Oklaun will have early voting in the Village Hall Auditorium and that begins October 19th and runs through November 2nd. And there will be more details to come. And I also have the mail-in ballots in my office. If anybody likes them, just get ahold of me and I'll mail them out to you or come up to see me. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Jane. Item 19, Village President's Report. 19A is a request to approve the Liquor Licensing and Review Commission referral recommending to increase Class B liquor license. This includes wine tastings issued to Amazon Retail at 4031 West 95th Street. This was approved, six-zero vote. Amazon was the petitioner in District Four and may have a motion on 19A.
Motion approved, Mayor.
Trustee Vorder made that motion, seconded by Trustee Phelan. Any discussion?
Yeah, Mayor, if I could comment, this is an exciting event that's taking place in District Four. As you know, we've been developing that property now for a couple of years and this is probably the worst-kept secret in the Village of Oklaun, that this retailer was going in there. So finally, they've made an application for some licensing and hopefully we'll see a store in there this fall.
Yeah, I'm hearing October. Originally, they were talking June, but.
I've heard it too. I also hear that DuPage County Medical Center may be there this fall, too.
Yeah, DuPage Medical Group, yeah. Very good. Any other discussion? Let's call the vote. 19A.
Trustee Olenichuk?
Yes.
Trustee Phelan?
Yes.
Trustee Vorder?
Yes.
Trustee Mallow?
Yes.
Trustee Stalker?
Yes.
Motion passes.
19B, Liquor Boy, Ordinance 201439, ordinance increasing the number of Class B liquor licenses that can be issued in the village. Amazon Retail LLC is the petitioner. May I have a motion on 19B?
Good to move.
Thank you. Trustee Olenichuk made that motion.
Okay.
Trustee Phelan was out the gate quicker. Any discussion? Any discussion? Let's call that vote, please.
Trustee Olenichik?
Yes.
Trustee Phelan?
Yes.
Trustee Vorder?
Yes.
Trustee Mallow?
Yes.
Trustee Stalker?
Yes.
Thank you. Item C is a request to decrease Class U liquor license issued to Little Something Extra Bakery and Cafe at 4616 West 103rd Street, Oaklawn, in District Six. And unfortunately, they are no longer in business, so that is the reason this is on the agenda. May have a motion on nineteen C.
Motion approved.
I'm going to give that to trustee Phelan, seconded by trustee Olenichik. Any discussion?
Yes, Mayor, I'd like to say a few things. As you pointed out, this is a business that was started by a family in my district, actually personal friends of mine, Bill and Maria Veal. It was called Little Something Extra Bakery because they have a son with developmental disabilities, and it's just one of these tragic stories about COVID. And, you know, they, they struggled to, to keep things afloat. They got up the ground, the, the feedback was great, it was slow-going, and then the, the bottom fell out. And the mayor, I know this is true to, to your heart, shopping local, and I, I can't help but notice that this, the dichotomy of these people leaving as the other businesses coming in. And again, nobody can discount the Amazon name, it's a great business enterprise. You know, at some point in the, in the future, will it be the only business around? I mean, it's sort of scary to think about every box on every porch and multiple trucks up and down the streets, but the mayor has always said it's important to shop. Shop local, shop local, shop local. And to the extent you can, and you do go out and spend your dollars where you're not buying it from your computer.[562.91]
Okay. Great. Good evening, everyone. This is the Board of Trustees' regular meeting. It's July 14, 2020. It is 7:38 PM. This is meeting number 2020-13 in the Village Oaklawn boardroom. Jane, please take the roll.
President Berry?
Here.
Trustee Stalker?
Here.
Trustee Olunichik?
Here.
Trustee Desmond will not be here tonight. Trustee Phelan will not be here tonight. Trustee Vorder?
Here.
Trustee Mallow?
Here.
We do have a quorum.
Thank you. Would everyone rise for the pledge, please? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic in which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, thank you, everyone. Item three, public comments. Jane, any public comments tonight?
Okay, thank you very much. Item four, conflict of interest disclosure. Does anyone have a conflict to disclose with any item on tonight's agenda? Hearing none. We're going to move on to item five, approval of the meeting minutes for the closed meeting minutes 2020-02 dated February 25, 2020. May I have a motion, please, on five?
Motion approved.
Thank you. Trustee Mallow made that motion, seconded by?
Second.
Trustee Stalker, any discussion? Let's call that vote, please.
Trustee Stalker?
Yes.
Trustee Olunichik?
Yes.
Trustee Vorder?
Trustee Mallow?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you. Six, approval of meeting minutes for the closed meeting minutes 2020-03 dated April 14, 2020. May I have a motion on item six, please? I'm sorry, item seven. Did I? No, six, six. I'm sorry. Motion was trustee Vorder. Thank you.
Second. Second.
Terri and Bud.
Okay, Terri and Bud. Okay, let's call the, any discussion? Let's call the vote, please.
Trustee Stalker?
Yes.
Trustee Olunichik?
Yes.
Trustee Vorder?
Yes.
Trustee Mallow?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Seven is approval of the meeting minutes for the closed meeting minutes 2020-04 dated May 26, 2020. May I have a motion on seven?
Motion approved.
Thank you. Trustee Stalker made that motion. Do I have a second?
I'll second, ma'am.
Thank you, trustee Vorder. Any discussion here? Let's call that vote, please.
Trustee Stalker?
Yes.
Trustee Olunichik?
Yes.
Trustee Vorder?
Yes.
And trustee Mallow?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Eight is approval of the meeting minutes for the regular meeting minutes 2020-11 dated June 9, 2020. May I have a motion on eight, please?
Motion approved, ma'am.
Trustee Vorder made that motion, seconded by?
Second.
Trustee Stalker, thank you. Any discussion? Call the vote on eight, please. Trustee Stalker?
Yes.
Trustee Olunichik?
Yes.
Trustee Vorder?
Yes.
Trustee Mallow?
Yes.
Motion passes. Great. Nutmer nine, new business by village trustees. Let's start in District number two, trustee Olunichik.
Yes, I just want to thank the Public Works Department for the great job that they did in the, the Special Events Committee with our Fourth of July Parade. Although it was a smaller parade than normal years, it was still nice to see people out there celebrating our Independence Day. The Raiders did a great job leading in a very hot day off with the flag. And our color guard was done by, that was Johnson Phillips, the color guard?
Johnson Phelps.
Johnson Phelps. So it made me very proud to see that even in these tough times dealing with the virus, that people were still able to go out and celebrate the Fourth of July. I do want to make a special note to Scott Muniz from the Public Works Department. Scott did a great job filling some big shoes, which I'll get into later. And then Dan Vittorio did a great job for the Police Department and the Fire Department. I don't know if you were out there. So it was a well-run event. I know a lot of people had fun at it. It was a good time. Speaking of the big shoes that have been left open, Steve Barrett, our Public Works Director, retired after 46 years of working for the Village of Oaklawn. And I got to tell you, there isn't a harder working department head, and I hate to say this to the rest of you guys, but Steve would be out in any rainstorm, any snowstorm. He was out, when I first got elected, we had a lot of flooding issues, and he was out day and night helping out the residents, taught his staff and his crew very, very well what it means to be a public servant, working in public works. But he led by example. And Steve, you deserve your retirement. I know that it was a long 46 years, but thank you for all of your service. Thank you for all your work. And, and I'm very happy to know that he did train his staff well. And when you see these younger guys come up like Scott Muniz that did a great job for the parade, that just shows you how well they were mentored. And then finally, chief, again, I got to compliment you and the Police Department at the, the great job that they have been doing through all these difficult situations. And I can only tell you that from the residents throughout the village have just echoed how great of a job our police team has done and continues to do, and how much they are appreciated. And I guarantee you, this village supports our Police Department and backs our Police Department, and will fully fund our police. That continues, that concludes my report.
Thank you. We're going to move on to District Three, trustee Mallow.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I just wanted to speak real quickly about the concert events that we have going on. We've already had two events these last two Sundays. We have four more concert events scheduled, July 19, July 26, August 16, and August 30. So those will also be concerts on the green, starting at seven, ending around 9:30. So I do want to echo trustee Olunichik with congratulations to Steve Barrett. I've known Steve a long time through baseball and getting to know him and understand exactly what trustee Olunichik says and how hard of a worker he is. So congratulations to Steve on his retirement. Thank you.
Thank you. District four, trustee Vorder.
Thank you, mayor. First off, me too. Steve was more than a good employee. If I had a problem in the fourth district, he responded to my concerns immediately and solved every single one. Steve was a truly dedicated employee, and whoever moves up to fill his shoes has got a big job to do. And I want to just remind everybody in the dog days of summer to stay safe, okay? We, I guess our virus here in Illinois is holding its own, but in some states, there's been a real big spike. I think wearing a mask and separate yourself from six feet is a good idea. Please try to do it. And enjoy the rest of the summer. Thank you, mayor.
Thank you. Very good. District five, trustee Stalker.
Yeah, I just want to echo the comments made by the other trustees about Steve Barrett. I didn't realize it, but I've known Steve for a long time. He was actually a bouncer at my cousin's bar on Western Avenue many, many years ago. And when I came to work here at the Village of Oaklawn, he's always been a true professional, helpful, quick to respond, very thorough in whatever he did for either the trustees or our customers, the residents. And I really appreciate the, the high standard that he set when it comes to being the Public Works Director. I wish him a happy and healthy retirement, and thank him for all the support that he gave to this village. Thank you.
And Steve, you can work on that golf game. You need it.
Very good. Okay, Village Managers' report. Chief?
No report, mayor, but again, I would like to echo everybody else. Thanks, Steve, for his many years of service and staff as well, that we've all been working pretty hard trying to make sure we get through the COVID crisis, and, and everybody's been doing double jobs and everything else. So I want to thank staff personally.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Well said. I couldn't agree more. Okay. Going to take the mask off for item 11. It goes A through, I think, Z. So here we go, folks. This is our consent agenda. Item 11, all items on the consent agenda are routine and have been brought forward at the direction of the Board of Trustees and will be enacted with one motion. If discussion is desired, that item will be removed from the consent agenda and considered separately. Item 11A is a request to approve the Traffic Safety Committee referral recommending removing no parking restrictions in front of 5451 West 110th Street. This was a six vote to approve petition number TC-1275-M Lake Mary. Catherine Bello Mueller is the petitioner in District Five. And then we have B, which looks like an ordinance granting that request. C is a request to approve the Traffic Safety Committee referral for recommending resident-only parking in front of 10513 South Colmar. This was a seven zero vote to approve petition number TC-1276-M. Jose Peregrino is the petitioner in District Six. D, Lake David, is an ordinance granting that request. E is a request to approve the Traffic Safety Committee referral recommending no trucks over five tons signs in the area of 101st and Ridgeland Avenue, north to Southwest Highway and east to Melvina Avenue. This was a six zero vote to approve petition number TC-1278-M Lake Mary. Then F is an ordinance granting that request. G is ordinance 201331, an ordinance authorizing the sale of Village of Oaklawn Police Department K-9, commonly known as Dogger. Item H, request to approve the Zoning and Planning Commission referral for an amendment to the U.S. zoning, I'm sorry, the Village zoning code, sections 4-14-8, special uses, types of uses, 4-6A-2, C1, General Business District Use Regulations, and 4-6B-3, C2, General Service District Use Regulations. Changing the square footage of medical offices that require a special use permit from 6,000 square feet to 4,000 square feet. This was a four one vote to approve. And item I is an ordinance granting that request. J is ordinance 201334, an ordinance setting the time and date for a public hearing to consider the amended redevelopment plan and project for the Patriot Station, TIF, redevelopment project area, and convening a joint review board in connection therewith. Item K, ordinance 201335, an ordinance approving the sale of certain real property located 9200 South Kilpatrick Avenue to Mycagerty Buick GMC Incorporated. Resolution L, I'm sorry, L is resolution 201335, a resolution approving a professional engineering service agreement with Christopher B. Burke Engineering Limited for the 2020 PCC Alley Reconstruction and 2020 Road Program Phase Two projects. M is resolution 201336, a resolution authorizing the release of certain executive session minutes. N is resolution 2013-37, a resolution awarding insu-to-form technologies, the contract to perform the 2020 sanitary sewer inspection and rehabilitation program. Resolution, I'm sorry, O, resolution 20-13-38, a resolution awarding benchmark construction, the contract to complete the 2020 sanitary sewer manhole rehab program. P is resolution 2013-39, resolution approving an agreement between the Village of Oaklawn and Oaklawn Foreign Fire Insurance Tax Board to share the costs for new equipment and upgrades for the Oaklawn Fire Department. Q, resolution 201340, resolution authorizing village manager to submit an application for coronavirus relief funds provided to Cook County under the Coronavirus Aid, Relief, and Economic Security Act, also known as the CARES Act. R is resolution 201341, a resolution approving an agreement between the Village of Oaklawn and the International Union of Operating Engineers Local 150, representing employees in the public works and administrative staff. S is resolution 201342, resolution approving an agreement between the Village of Oaklawn and Jeff Seabec. T, resolution 201343, resolution approving the Sixth Amendment to Professional Services Agreement between the Village of Oaklawn and CDM Smith Incorporated for detailed design and bidding services of improvements to booster stations one and two transmission main. U, resolution 201344, resolution approving the Second Amendment to the Professional Services Agreement between the Village of Oaklawn and CDM Smith for the 2013 Regional Water System Improvements Orland Park Spur Two Project. Item V, Lake Victor, resolution 201345, a resolution approving an agreement between the Village of Oaklawn and Zachary Riddle. W, resolution 201346, a resolution awarding CDM Smith Incorporated, a contract to complete a water system risk and resilience assessment pursuant to America's Water Infrastructure Act of 2018. X, appointment of John Rollins to the Arts and Events Commission to fill an unexpired term of Colleen McAnd. Y, appointment of Brian Hannigan to the Police Pension Board. Item Z, motion to approve after the Board of Trustees' an executive session 2020-05 dated June 9, 2020, reviewed for release of closed meeting minutes December 12, 2017, number 1714, January 9, 2018, number 1801, April 10, 2018, number 1805, June 12, 2018, number 1807, August 14, 2018, number 1808, January 8, 2019, number 1901, January 22, 2019, number 1902, February 12, 2019, number 1903, May 28, 2019, number 1905, July 24, 2019, number 1907, August 13, 2019, number 1908, October 14, 2019, number 1909, October 22, 2019, number 1910, and February 11, 2020, number 2001, that the need for confidentiality still exists. May I have a motion, gentlemen, on item 11?
Motion approved.
Thank you. We have that motion by trustee Mallow, seconded by trustee Vorder. Any discussion? Let's call the vote on number 11, please. Trustee Stalker?
Yes.
Trustee Olunichik?
Yes.
Trustee Vorder?
Yes.
Trustee Mallow?
Yes.
Motion passes four zero. Thank you, everyone. Jane, Village Clerk's report, number 12.
Yes. Approval of semi-monthly disbursements, number 2020-12D, dated June 23, 2020, in the amount of $2,454,729.45.
Motion approved.
Thank you. I have a motion from trustee Olunichik. Do I have a second?
I'll second, ma'am.
Thank you. Trustee Vorder is our second. Any discussion? Let's call that vote, please. Trustee Stalker?
Yes.
Trustee Olunichik?
Yes.
Trustee Vorder?
Yes.
Trustee Mallow?
Yes.
Motion passes four zero.
12B, approval of semi-monthly disbursements, number 2020-13D, dated July 14, 2020, in the amount of $8,573,957.56.
Thank you. May I have a motion on 12B, please? A motion from trustee Olunichik. Is there a second?
I'll second again, ma'am.
Trustee Vorder, thank you. Any discussion? Call that vote, please. Trustee Stalker?
Yes.
Trustee Olunichik?
Yes.
Trustee Vorder?
Yes.
Trustee Mallow?
Yes.
Couple more things, mayor. Census 2020. The Census Bureau is doing an all-out push to encourage households to complete the census form now. If not, the non-response follow-up begins with census personnel knocking on doors and calling you. But I want to thank everybody who has responded, and if you haven't, please do so. And Cook County property tax bills. The second installment Cook County tax bills are out and due on August 3. The property owners can pay without any interest charge through October 1, 2020. If anybody would like any more information on that, please go to cookcountytreasure.com. That is Maria Pappas's office. Thank you. That's it, Jane. That is, thank you. Item 13, Village President's Report. 13A is the Liquor Commission appointment of John Hopkins to fill in an unexpired vacant term. May I have a motion on 13?
Motion approved, ma'am.
Thank you. Trustee Vorder made that motion, seconded by trustee Olunichik. Any discussion? Let's call that vote, please. Trustee Stalker?
Yes.
Trustee Olunichik?
Yes.
Trustee Vorder?
Yes.
Trustee Mallow?
Yes.
Motion passes. Thank you. General Village Matters, I just want to thank Steve Barrett also for his many, many decades of service. There wasn't a bad day in any of our lifetimes, except maybe trustee Vorder's, that Steve Barrett was not part of the solution to, you know, flood, fire, you name it. I mean, he's there, leading his team, and, you know, he will be missed. We do wish him a very happy retirement and many, many years of relaxation that is well-deserved. Just want to thank our team also. It's been challenging, to say the least, with this pandemic, and I've never been more proud of our department heads, our employees, and frankly, our citizens as well. You know, we're starting to kind of open up things, and, you know, we're talking, you know, about getting ready for school, and, you know, what's, what's that going to look like? And what the school year for those kids looks like will depend a lot on what we do the next few months. So as things open up, as you shop, as you go into businesses, please do your best. I know these are a pain. I know it's hot outside, but if hand washing and wearing a mask can get us our lives back, you know, let's, let's give, give it a good, honest try. And, you know, if you're a business owner, please, you know, especially if you're serving food or beverages, have your employees wear a mask. Be, be disciplined with it. Don't be part of something that might be spreading this. Let's just get through this already. I know all of us are sick of it, and, you know, just stay healthy, everyone. And again, you know, even if we have events, if you're not comfortable going out yet, it's okay not to, you know, but, but support our businesses when you can. With that, I'm going to go on to item 14, Executive Session 2020-06, for the purpose of discussing, number one, approval of closed meeting minutes 2020-05 dated June 9, 2020, and two, information regarding the appointment, employment, compensation, discipline, performance, or dismissal of a specific employee of the Village of Oaklawn. May I have a motion on 14, please?
I will.
Thank you. Trustee Olunichik made that motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you. Trustee Stalker, any discussion? Okay, let's call that vote. Trustee Stalker?
Yes.
Trustee Olunichik? Trustee Vorder?
Yes.
Trustee Mallow?
Yes.
Motion passes four zero. Great. Thanks, everyone. So we're going to go into executive session. Thank you.